So it says we are live on YouTube.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. I'm going to open this meeting. It's the regular meeting of council. We're going to be live streaming tonight electronically again. This is the meeting for October the 19th. So the meeting is now open and a couple of things. I just want to mention to the public that if you do have any questions, to please send them to the administration email, which you'll see on the on the link for the meeting. Because that way we can get them asked tonight. So please send them to any questions to the administration email. And those are questions pertaining to our meeting. So I'm going to now ask everyone, please, to if we could have a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I have a motion here. This is moved by Jeff Carroll and second by Karen Jennings. That council agreed to move items. So I think I will move, let's see. B. So we have, if we can move items B and D, B and D, from information items to action items for discussions. That's B and D. And then I would also like to only make a comment. I'm not asking to move it to action. Just make a comment about C. Anything else? All in favor? Okay, thanks, everybody. That's carried. Moved by Karen Jennings, second by Ian Straight, that the regular meeting of council agenda. I guess we should say their amended agenda, right, Kristi? Because we did agenda because we had we amended it by adding those two because they weren't on the original agenda. So we'll just I'll just put on here amended agenda. That is, if it's okay with you Karen and Ian as the mover and secutor. That is dated October the 6th, 19th, 2021, be approved as circulated. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Claus?
Yes. I had trouble getting on. Hi, yeah, sorry. My first time trying, it didn't work.
Okay, so I now also remind all of council that if you do have any disclosure of interest, you can declare it now or anytime when it comes up in the meeting. Claus?
Yes, item three, B and C, if I could read, please.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you for that. Moving on, I do have a motion that was moved by Ian Straight and second by Claus Vandermeer, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of October the 5th, 2021, be approved as circulated. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Does anyone have any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, we're going to move on then. Tonight, we have no delegations. The first report is going to be yours, Andrew, and that's on the Communications Tower at 252 Bennett. Thank you, Andrew. I'll hand this over to you then.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so this report this evening is a report for action and it's regarding the Communications Tower 252 Bennett Road. The recommendation is that council supports the application of the Communication Tower proposed by Rogers at 252 Bennett Road in order to improve and increase coverage for reliable wireless voice and data services. This is a follow up to the report that was at the Committee of the Whole on October 5th. No concerns were raised by members of the public after appropriate circulation and consultation took place. And council has the option of issuing a letter of concurrence or refusing to issue it, which could be petitioned back to Industry Canada. Because there's a federal level that looks after cell towers. So that's the recommendation you have in front of you this evening is to to support the application.
Andrew, I'm just wondering, it's just a question, should we add to this resolution? Should we just add to it that we would we would support it by sending a letter?
Yeah, so at the bottom under options, if support's given, then the township would send a letter to support that.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? Yes, Claus?
Thanks, Reeve. Andrew, is this one of many towers that Rogers plans on putting in or is it just one tower?
This evening, we're just dealing with this one tower for this report.
And and they they would have to come back with the with the same procedure for every tower because it's on a different, it's in a different. Seeing no other further questions and comments, then I have a motion here which was moved by Claus Vandermeer and seconded by Jeff Carroll, that council received the following report, the Communications Tower at 252 Bennett Road, and that the following be approved, that council support the application of the Communication Tower proposed by Rogers at 252 Bennett Road in order to improve and increase coverage for reliable wireless voice and data services. All in favor? That's covered, Carrie. Thank you. And so whenever that letter is ready, I can sign that. Kristi and Andrew there, okay? So thank you for that one, Andrew, and the next one is also yours, and that's on the that's 3B. So I'll wait for you, Claus.
Yep, thank you, Reeve.
Okay, Kristi? Okay. All right, so Andrew, back to you then. This is on the custodial services interim contract, Rosedale Hall.
Yes, so for this report, it's a report for action regarding the custodian services interim contract. So this is a contract for Rosedale Hall and this would be like the the first report to do with custodial services this evening, and then there's a second report to follow. So this one is just for Rosedale Hall. Recommendation is that the agreement for the interim custodial services contract be approved is drafted and that staff be directed to have the agreement signed. So the proposed interim contract is attached and it's specifically for cleaning and opening and closing of the Rosedale Hall. And it's a follow up to previous meetings council has had in September that started back earlier in the year and now we have the custodial services contract ready. So if council approves that, then we can proceed to have that signed.
Okay, thank you then. I have a see Karen, please.
So in the contract, it says there's a probationary period. It says January 2021. I believe that should be January 2022. And then it's got a rate of $35 an hour. Is that the current contract value that we're paying?
Yes, that's the rate that's been used previously for Rosedale Hall. And for hourly.
Any other questions? Okay, I do have a motion. Yes, Ian, did I see your hand? No? No?
No, no, Reeve.
Okay, thanks. So I have a motion here that was moved by Jeff Carroll and second by Karen Jennings, that council receive the custodial services interim contract report for Rosedale Hall and that the following be approved, that the agreement for the interim custodial services contract be approved as drafted and that staff be directed to have the agreement signed. All in favor? Thank you, everybody. That's carried. And the next one is also yours, Andrew, and that's the second one on the store services RFQ.
Yes, so this report also for action is regarding the custodian services contract. And what this would do is, you know, following the interim contract we just spoke about, this would provide an ongoing outcome for all the facilities in the township to be cleaned. So the recommendation is that the amended RFQ be approved by council and the staff be directed. Okay, so I'm not sure if that reads clearly, but it's staff be directed to draft for review and approval by council to be brought forward for review and issuance. So this has the RFQ attached and all the facilities are contained in Schedule A and it has a schedule of what would be cleaned. And changes have been made from when this was issued back in March. And so we we would reissue this and see what response the township receives.
Any questions? I think what when I was reading this earlier today, Andrew, there was just one one thing I thought about there. I know this is being specific, but we have a lot of specifics in this report, which is, I think, good. But when you were talking, when we had, I read the the section on kitchen. And I think it word reads something like clean and something appliances. I just wondered if we could add in there, whatever, maybe. I think it should be like at least at least a couple of times a year or maybe more, but periodically at least actually pull, if possible, pull the appliance out and look underneath of it because we don't want little critters in there. And so I'm just saying that specifically, I'm just wondering if we can add that little specific thing to it so that it's in the contract also.
Right, we could add that for sure, if council would like to.
Yeah, is anyone opposed to that? Okay, I don't think anybody's opposed to that, Andrew, and I think I saw, was it your hand, Jeff? Or was it Karen?
It's Jeff.
Okay, Jeff, please.
Thank you, Reeve. Just a quick one because I know we're going to post it. Are we also going to, because we discussed originally too as well, about sending it out to different vendors too as well or 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 anyway, just sending it out to different vendors or we're just going to post it? Andrew?
So if we're aware, if we're aware of qualified possible respondents, we could notify them for sure.
Okay, right, right now, the plan, sorry, just follow a quick read there. The plan is really just to just to post it right now. We don't have any other sort of qualified because we had talked about that. So is that something that if we or the public have some qualified people too as well that they could, we can send that in so that we can make sure that that gets out to those those candidates as well?
I think I think we've done that in the past, Jeff, where possible. My belief is, why wouldn't we do it? You know, the more options, the better.
We talked about.
I had Ian next and then Karen, but Ian, please.
Yeah, I agree with Council Carroll. We did talk about it and I thought that we were going to move us and especially to some local people. But what's about in the passer from, you know, the Ottawa area and stuff like that. So that's the cost significantly. So I agree with Council Carroll that we should send it out to some local people if possible.
Thanks, Karen.
I was going to suggest that if you know of somebody that you contact them to get a hold of the township office to get the documents so that they can complete them.
Yep. I think both of these suggestions are two different options, but both pretty legitimate. And I think I think I think that there's nothing wrong with either of them. Like I said, the more we get this out, the wider the wider coverage we put, we get it out, the more the more options and which is always a good thing. Okay, anything else on this then? Okay, so thank you for this all this report also, Andrew, and I do have a the motion here which was moved by Karen Jennings and second by Ian Straight, that the following report, that being the custodial services RFP and that the following be approved, that the amended RFQ be approved by council and that staff be directed to draft the review and approval by council to be brought forward for review and issuance. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And I guess if you don't mind, Kristi, if you could let Claus back in. Please.
It'll just be a second.
Yep, thanks. Okay, so moving forward, I do have a motion moved by Ian Straight and seconded by Jeff Carroll, that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting of October the 5th, 2021 be approved as circulated. Yes, Ian?
Yeah, item, before we approve them, I just think council's view on item 3A, which is the Leonard County Tourism Initiative, I was contacted by people that live all over.
Excuse me, Ian, if we can, I will come back to that in a second. Because right now, this motion is just approving the minutes. And then I'll come back to it under business arising from the minutes. I have a note here that that I I will make to council as a suggestion regarding that. So if we can just please approve the minutes first. So all in favor of the minutes? Okay, thank you. And I will come back to Ian in a sec, but my, I would like to make a suggestion now. I think that we have Steve with us. So this suggestion I'm going to make to council, but I'll pass it by you there, Steve. And the fact of the matter is that I like Ian and probably and maybe all of you were contacted by, I know that the township has been contacted by at least two of the local taxpayers regarding that issue. And my suggestion, when when they called, was that they be allowed to do a delegation if they wish, which is the process, and that may or may not happen, but that would go through our staff. But my suggestion would have been that if we would be able to ask our public workspeople to defer any work until after we hear the delegation, hopefully in two weeks. And that's what I was going to suggest and and I would ask if we have consensus for that for that suggestion. But I'll go to you first, Ian, and then I'll go and then maybe I'll 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 ask you, Steve, if you have any comment about it. But first, I'll go to you, Ian.
No, I think that you summarized it quite quite well there, Reeve Dobson. That was again the direction I gave. That was contact the the office and if they had petition or would like to bring a delegation forward, that would be the best thing to speak about their concern. So if they're going to that, then I guess I agree with you. We postpone doing any work there until we till we hear back from them.
Now, hopefully, that would have that would have to be though in in two weeks because we, you know, if we're moving forward, we certainly don't want to delay. But maybe, Steve, if I can put you on the spot and just ask if you have any comment on this or if you if you see any problems doing this.
Thank you, Reeve. No, I see no problems. We we still have to wait. Once the final approval is given, we'll have to issue for permits and that if it's decision council wants to move forward with. So I'll just hold off doing anything until we get final approval. So definitely listen to the delegation and we'll go from there.
Okay, thanks, Steve. And I'm not sure whether maybe maybe our staff has already heard from them. But I did encourage them to to move very quickly on this and and try to get on for our very next meeting, which would be in two weeks. So Claus, please.
Yeah, since I live right down the road from there, I did speak to one of the neighbors and he was very much in favor of this whole project. So I would be quite interested to hear what his delegation has to say because he was very much in favor of the whole thing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And Jeff?
What is there a an ETA of when the the project has to be completed for that funding that's that's coming from the county? Does it have to be done by this year?
Yeah, no, next next year, I think in what what's, do you know what the date is, Andrew? I know it's 2022.
Yeah, I believe the county is going to be forwarding the funds to us in the near future and putting this project in their tourism initiative report, I believe, in December. So but I believe there's flexibility there for the start and finish date of this, along with that, that we can still do what we're planning.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Yes, Jeff?
Just to follow up, I mean, I mean, it's, I did do a stroll down there. I drove by Claus's house there and and just happened to meet Stephen. I guess he was talking to some residents down there and we did a walk there. And yeah, it's a it's a nice big open spot and and while we were parked there, there was a bus that came down and turned around when we were parked there too as well. So it was, I guess we'll see what the, you know, where the delegation goes and I'm open for the conversation too as well. So and thanks for the walk in.
Okay, so thanks for everybody's comments and input there. So that's, we'll just wait to hear from the delegation in two weeks. So moving on then, is there any other business rising from those minutes? Seeing none, then the next is I have a motion moved by Jeff Carroll and second by Karen Jennings, that the minutes of the Miracle Library Board meeting of September the 21st, 2021 be approved as circulated. All no questions? Did you have a question, Claus?
No, no, just in favor.
Okay, all all in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. That's Carrie. And moving on, tonight, we have no petitions, bylaws, motions, no motions. And we're going to go into the correspondence and the first one that was moved forward was was B. And I moved that one forward. And I'm hoping that you all read it. And because the Salvation Army is asking for volunteers to be to look after the kettle. And just to let everybody know, if you don't know already, for every year for, well, I'm going to say many, many years, I actually manned the kettle on behalf of Montague. I was not able to do it last year because of some health issues. So it wasn't, I can't remember, to be honest, they may not have done it last year for the COVID. But they are looking at doing it this year. And what it entails is volunteers. Now, they're asking, I believe, they're actually asking anyone from Montague. It can be one of us on council. It could be a staff member. Or I believe there's no reason why it also couldn't be a public member resident. And what they like to do is have two hour blocks to just sit, you just stand there and and just accept the donations. And they have also suggested, and I know that some organizations or councils, it doesn't have to be a council, but some organizations or groups actually can take a full day at one of the sites. So you might, whatever that is, whether it's six hours or eight hours. And then you just take turns. And but I just wanted to put the word out to everybody and I think that the way we can handle this, that if anyone would like to volunteer to do this, then simply get a hold of Kristi and I'm sure she will look after all of the details for us. And I think maybe Kristi, you had your hand up before I explained this.
Did I just wasn't sure, did we skip over the council assigned task resolution?
Yes, we probably did. Okay, but I will, I will, you can pull me back there in a sec. Sorry about that. So then I'll just leave it at that unless, does anyone have any questions about that? Okay, what's the date again? I just can't remember. I read it, but what's the date? I know there's a beginning and an end. And there's a calendar there. You can pick your date. You can pick your date and you can pick your location. I think that every year, not really for convenience sake, but I think every year I did it at the LCBO. Claus, did you have a question?
Yeah, just on that note, Reeve, you mentioned about the council, maybe just a challenge. Could we maybe all get together and take a particular day and take turns as Montague Council manning one complete day for the cattle drive? Just a challenge, think about it. We don't have to decide right now.
Yeah, I I appreciate that. And I think that like certainly we've all heard it. And if we if we want to, then like I said, I think we just need to get a hold of Kristi and we would certainly get that organized pretty easily. And as I said, it doesn't have to be, it can be just like Montague itself could take, could take, could challenge others. And it doesn't have to be necessarily you know, council members. It can be council staff or public. Okay, so then that's all I wanted to say with that. And the then the C is the next one and I I wasn't going to I wasn't going to move, I'm not moving C forward for action. I just wanted to just make a comment. Because I wasn't sure what the the initials stand for for the new company that Alan and Partners have have joined with. It's K something. Whoa, does anyone know what that?
KPMG.
Yeah, does anyone know what that stands for?
It's, no, I don't, but it's a very large accounting firm in Ottawa.
Yeah, sorry, Claus. Maybe Andrew, you can you help help me there? It's not, it doesn't make any difference. I'm just interested to know like who the company is and where they're from. It's not ma- it doesn't make any difference, I'm just interested to know like who the company is and where they're from.
Right, and and it is part of a larger uh like franchise type, larger firm. So uh it's a larger group, so uh the multiple offices yeah uh covering large areas, so. This actually ties into the report that will be coming up in the committee the whole this evening as well, so uh there'll be a little more to do with this.
But but in in that, in that report, it doesn't say specifically, it just says the the letters, so again. I wasn't sure what those letters meant and where the company is from, where their headquarters are.
Right, I can probably grab that here uh for the next report and uh.
Okay.
If you guys, that is part of the uh the report.
Okay, thanks. Uh Claus, did you have something?
Thanks Reeve, yeah, as Andrew said, they are a very large firm, uh I dealt with it in my previous uh. Business that I was involved in and I I believe they're based out of Toronto. But the suggestion I'd like to make, if the Alan Partners are going to change. To belong to another organization, which is very large. We've used Alan and Partners for years and years, had great success, but I'm not a problem. Should we consider maybe now, there may change that we would actually put our services out for tender. Since it's gonna be a whole different company now.
They they will be doing it, Alan and Partners will still be doing all of the work, I believe, but Andrew, uh I'll go to you. Yes.
Yeah, but uh that's actually, that is actually what's coming up in the committee of the whole um. We have put that out and it's uh I'm gonna present that here in the next part of the meeting. Uh exactly what we're talking about.
Okay, so that that that's all I wanted to mention, I just was trying to get to the bottom of who this company was. Because I I just, it just had the letter, so we'll wait to the next uh to the next report, Ian, please.
Yeah, quickly, they're they're an international company, they're they're very, they're huge. They're not just Canadian, they're international, I think they actually came from Europe. Yeah, it's a ma- it's a very, very large company.
Yeah, okay, okay, thanks. So I'm going to go back to you Ian because you moved uh the information item D forward, so I'll go to you please.
Yeah, one of the uh people that are on the rec committee had sent this out actually to last ever brought forward. Um it's a Field of Dreams, it's actually uh sponsored by the Blueface. Uh they invest over one million dollars in uh grants and funding for uh ball diamonds across the Canada. And uh there is an application date, it's open right now for, you can apply. But the uh application goes on Friday, October twenty ninth. I was wondering if there was uh interest from council to have staff quickly look into it, to see if it's something that we can. Apply for um before the deadline runs out.
Wha- what was the deadline again, Ian, please?
It's October the twenty ninth.
So we we have very little time to 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 move on this. Um do any anyone else want to comment on this? Uh Jeff?
Yeah, I think, I mean, th- this is a great, and it just, it's just, it's always another example of what's out there for us as we work towards a recreation. I mean, I'm I'm game behind these things, I just, I don't know. Uh I hate to say we're not there yet, because I'm, I like to always move as fast as we can, but uh I don't know if we're there. There yet for it as we work through our recreation study, but I think it's another. Another key point of where money can come from as we as we look at, you know, trying to find really good services for uh. For our township, I mean, I I was sent another one uh by a resident talking about uh uh basically domes that cover uh. Tennis courts and and huge grant money for that too as well, that's that's coming from a different sector from the federal and the and the and the province, so. Uh I think this is a great example, coming from our rec committee, which is good, is uh just all of the the different uh. Avenues that funds can come from, uh that what the unfortunate side, I just don't think we're there yet, but it just, it gives a a very good example. To people that are maybe skeptic of what we could maybe do for that twenty two acres. The opportunity that's 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 out there and the and the the many different. Sources of funds that can be out there, uh that's just my my thoughts on that, so but it's great.
Thank you Jeff, I'll put this question out for anyone who may like to comment and uh. Maybe you have a comment on this also Andrew, and that is that um i- if we applied for that. And uh and we were s- somewhat successful. Uh I just don't remember um all of the details as far as like timelines and stuff and uh. And what is the cost sharing of this, like? Do those two questions are quite important, like what's the timeline that it has to be done, but also what's the breakdown of? Of of the cost sharing, because usually stuff like this is not a hundred percent funded by by anyone. So does anyone have the answer to this?
I think that would be something we just, we would have to follow up on and look into, um and with a tight timeline, uh I'm not sure that would work out, but uh. But we'd have to look at the eligibility of it and and all those things as we go to consider applying for it and the timelines and deadlines.
Yeah, so Ian, did you like you you kind of moved this forward here now and uh. I just not sure, like if you read into it further than some of us uh ju- just to to get some of these answers.
No, I I haven't read into it any further, it was just some of those parts that was brought for by the uh.
Yeah.
Something for the rec committee and I think it's, if there was time to look into it, I think it's beneficial to look into. Um I'm pretty sure that uh there's no baseball diamond within our uh within our township, it'd be nice to possibly probably have one. And I'm sure we could definitely fit it into the uh into our recreation scheme if uh someone was gonna fund. Fund some of the money or all of it, so I'm nervous to ask, you know, he's uh, you know, he's declined if you got it.
So the thing is, so I guess if we were, it it's not a case of actually asking right now. I I guess if we were gonna do anything, then it would be a case of applying for it. And uh and ob- obviously, you can always, you know, if you were successful, you could always turn it down. But that's not a very good idea usually either, because if you turn something down, then you're not probably not gonna get it when you try the next time. But and then the other comment, I'm just throwing these comments out because. You know, I know there's a time, the timeline is very, very close, but if needed. Uh you know, we 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 have done it in the past and you, I can call a special meeting for. Whatever, ten minutes to approve this, if we were going to move forward with it, but uh as you pointed out Andrew, the. Timeline's pretty tight, so I'll go to you Karen, please.
So on the site, it says, um while we understand that many organizations are in need of support. We require that grant applications meet the following criteria for eligibility. Must be grassroots or charitable organizations, so I don't think a municipality will be able to apply. It does state that you must be able to provide audited financial statements from the past year or most recent. And you have to have all applicable municipality and where permits were required. So I I don't think it's something the municipality gets to apply for. And because our rec committee is not on standalone or registered as a charitable organization. I'm not sure we truly are eligible.
Yeah, good comments. A- anything else then? Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, just to follow up, I I think that's one of those where I where I kind of got there. Where we're just not ready for it yet, I I think this is one of those things where we can see that. There's an opportunity for it, there is, there is notes about municipalities uh being a part of it though, so but I I I hear what Council Jennings is saying. But uh I think we're just not there yet, and I think this is one of those ones that, and then it's also, it's a recurring one too as well. Uh that that they look to c- continue to invest, so it's one that is definitely that we need to keep on our radar. When we're, when we're moving forward, I mean, and hopefully over the next year or two. The that we might be, this could be one that we could, we get access to 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 really support something in that uh twenty two acres, so. Uh I think it's great, but we're just, let's, we have to finish that first study first, because that's gonna give us the ammunition to to help to apply for these kind of things.
Yeah, and it's just like you said, I mean, uh the the rink of dreams was an ongoing thing, I can't remember. But many, many years ago it started and they keep adding new rinks of rims. So obviously the field of dreams is the same uh same idea. Okay, I think then we've pretty well got consensus, uh unless you wanted to still move this forward Dean.
No, I think we're, I think we've uh beat it to death with a bat.
Yeah, well, thanks for bringing it up, it's a, it's a good discussion and it's certainly something and I appreciate the uh. I had seen the uh emails from the uh committee uh member and uh it's a good thing to put on the table, but uh. But uh we we'll just bring it back again, I guess, so thank you everybody for that. Uh now, I have a motion moved by Karen Jennings and second by Ian Straight, that council received the council. Had signed task item as information. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Before we recess recess this meeting, I'm going to ask you uh. Christie, if we have any que- questions from the public?
Let me check.
Good, thanks.
Um I don't see any questions through email, Facebook or YouTube. So.
Okay, thank, thank you then.
Great.
Okay, so I have a motion here, it was moved by Ian Straight and second by Claus Vandemere, that. Uh sorry, that council recess at six forty one, six forty one. PM, uh all in favor? That is carried. So we're just gonna recess and take maybe a two minute break or so, two minutes. Just so we can change over and we'll move on to our committee meetings, thank you everyone, we'll be back in two minutes.
Christie, I'll send you this form.
You got hockey tonight, Jeff?
That's the plan. That's the plan. We have a later meeting. It's good. It's gonna be a later meeting tonight, so. Should be, so it's good, yeah. It almost killed me last week. I played twice last week and it was a. A body shock for sure. I didn't really get to play last year, so it was a. And I was on the ice with my son, it was all on Saturday, so I was, yeah, it was a good. It was very exciting though, it's, it, you know, you miss it a lot when you don't get to do it. So it was very exciting to get to. To get to be back out there again.
Yeah.
All the, all the adults were like kids out there when we were playing. It was. Just happy, just happy to be there.
Be there, yes. I can imagine after a long sit at home. They're still playing brumball?
Who? Is there that sport still, the people, those people still play it? I don't know where people play it, if they still do. I don't, I don't really see anything, unless I miss it, but it's never, it was never one of my things, but it was. But I think there's still leagues out there for it, for sure. It's a.
When I worked at Hershey's, we had quite a few teams at Brumball at one time.
It seemed like a very popular thing, like I want to say years ago, but I don't know if it's, if it's lost its popularity or.
Yeah. It's quite the workout, I'll tell you. Run from one end and then turn around and run in the back again.
It's a lot of running on the ice, but on some skates.
A lot of running, a lot of running.
Sorry, it wasn't that long ago, there was something in Beckwith. It was interesting. Well, I guess maybe it was in Crotton Place. Sorry, there was some sort of a reunion of. Brumball to see some of these old guys back out.
Oh, yeah.
No, no thanks.
Was that not like a provincial, a provincial tournament of some sort, I think?
Could have been. I scooted over on my lunch to see a couple of teams. It was, yeah.
They used to have quite a few provincial ones in Snow Falls at one time when Hershey's was going strong with it.
Okay, so we're going to move on, everybody, please. So you're, we're live, Christie. Okay, thanks. Welcome back, everyone. This is our committee, the whole meeting. Uh, for October the nineteenth, and it's also going to be livestreamed electronically. So this meeting is now open and I have a, and a. A resolution by Ian Straight, second by Claus Vandermeer. That the committee, the whole agenda dated October the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one be approved. All in favor? That's carried. And then we're moving on also. I, I have to remind a council again, if you have any disforestation interest, you can declare it. Now or anytime during the meeting. Uh, we have no delegations tonight. And the first. Of the first three are going to be yours, Andrew. That's the first one on the awarding RFP Financial Audit Services. So over to you, Andrew. Thanks.
Thank you. So this report is for action and. It is on the RFP results for financial audit services. So. Um, the recommendation for this is that council award the financial audit services RFP two zero two one dash AD dash zero four to KPMG Limited. And the council direct staff to prepare a bylaw to appoint KPMG LLP for a period of five years as township auditors. With an option for an extension of an additional maximum of five years in accordance with municipal act two thousand and one, section two nine six. Um, so we put in an RFP for financial audit services. It was on township website, the local newspaper and bidding go, uh, and it closed on October eighth, twenty twenty-one. At three PM, uh, we had six takers and of the. RFP and the township received the one submission from KPMG LLP. So in the past, the townships used Allen and Partners for quite some time. And. On October fourth, Allen and Partners became known as KPMG LLP office. So. Um, that's going to be the same office with the same staff, so. By moving to KPMG, we would have the same levels of service and be working with the people that we've worked with before in that office. Um, we saw in the previous part of our meeting tonight, uh, the correspondence regarding this change. Um, in the name of the company and their structure. Uh, we reviewed the RFP that was received, uh, and it was scored ninety-five out of a possible one hundred and. In, under the report, under financial, it, we've shown the pricing structure that they've provided that would be for the next five years, which is. Very close and similar to the pricing that the township had for the last couple of year ends that we've had audited. And. The question we had just a little earlier was, uh, what does KPMG? Uh, stand for? What are those letters for? So I'll just give you a, a brief part of the RFP here that they provided. Uh, for a moment. Uh, so it says here, in Canada, KPMG is rooted back to eighteen sixty-nine. We have therefore been in business for over one hundred and fifty years. Since then, more than one hundred and thirty firms and communities across Canada are integral members of KPMG. Each of these. Has played a role in their growth. And. It is Pete Marwick Thorn. And Stevenson and Kellogg. Uh. It merged to become KPMG in Canada in nineteen ninety-four. Making it one of the leading big four firms in the country. Uh, so just one more bit of data here. KPMG is a Canadian limited liability partnership. Established under the laws of Ontario. It's a Canadian member firm affiliated with KPMG International Cooperative. A Swiss entity and it has a global network of professional firms that provide audit, tax and advisory services. And they represent, they're present in a hundred and forty-seven countries around the world and employ two hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-one people. Uh, in Canada, they have forty-five offices across the country, uh, with about seven hundred and eighty-five partners and over seven, four hundred and fifty-eight employees. And yes, part of the international firm has over two hundred thousand employees. So a little background there that came with that. So. As part of municipal act, section two ninety-six, uh, the municipality would appoint an auditor. Uh, and so what we're, that is what we're looking to do with this is to point their auditing services for the next five years, starting January twenty twenty-two.
Hey, thanks, Andrew, for that very clear, uh, report. Uh, seeing no other questions and comments, then I have a motion which was. Moved by Claus Vandermeer and second by Jeff Carroll, that the committee of the whole received the. Awarding RFP Financial Audit Services Report. And that the following be recommended to council, that council award the financial audit services. RFP twenty twenty-one, eighty dash zero four to KPMJ G. LLP and that council direct staff to prepare a bylaw to appoint. KPMG LLP for a period of five years as township orders. With an option for an extension of an additional maximum of five years. In accordance with the municipal act twenty, two thousand and one, section two ninety-six. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Did you have a question, Claus?
Yeah, I was just curious of Howard Allen is going to still report to us or will be someone else?
Yep. I think in the report, that's what it says, that they will definitely be reporting to us. Right, Andrew?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
We'll still be working with that office, his office in Perth.
Yeah. All in favor then? That is carried. Thank you, Andrew. And the next one is also yours and that's. On the third quarter overtime report.
Uh, yeah, so this report's provided for information and. Bring these accounts to each quarter. And if we look at previous years. Our overtime is about average compared to prior years and. We try to utilize that more in time in lieu if we can and. So there's no, what I would say, no surprises there at this point in the year.
Hey, thank you. No comments or questions? I have a motion then. Move by Jeff Carroll, second by Karen Jennings, that the committee of the whole received the following report. That being the report of the third quarter overtime report. And that's the following we recommend to council, that council accept the third quarter report as information. All in favor? Carry. And the next one is also yours, Andrew. That's on the third quarter financial report.
Uh, so I've provided this, uh, once again, uh, each quarter, we take a look at this. And. Make note of a few things that you might notice as you read through them and. We still feel that we are within reasonable expectation to the budget at this point in the year, which is good. We had a couple items that may be from timing. We might not see in the, till the fourth quarter report, uh, but that's still. Um, doesn't really give us any cause for concern and materiality or, or something like that, that I would point out at this time.
Hey, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by Karen Jennings, second by Ian Straight, that the committee of the whole received the following report. Third quarter financial report, that the following be recommended to council, that council accept the third quarter report for information. All in favor? Hey, thank you, Andrew. And now we're going to go to Steve. And for the three D and that's on the third quarter activity report for Public Works.
I'm not sure if Steve is available this evening. If you had any questions for this, I believe. Um, what we proposed was we could make note of those and we could get back to you with that information next time.
Okay, so, so I do have this resolution, but before I read it, were there any questions that would have been asked to Steve? Seeing none, then I have the motion here moved by Ian Straight, second by Claus Vandermeer. That the committee of the whole receive the third quarter activity report. For the public works and that the following be recommended to council, that council accept the third quarter report as information. All in favor? Carry. Next is the report. On, so yeah, we'll do the, we'll, they're, they're individuals here now tonight, so we'll do the third quarter MLE, oh, report. Any questions for this report? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by Claus Vandermeer, second by Jeff Carroll. That the committee of the whole receive the third quarter MLEO report. And that the following be recommended to council, that council accept third quarter report as information. All in favor? Carry. You. Next one is the fire chief from Malsbeere, third quarter fire report. Any questions on that? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by Jeff Carroll, second by Karen Jennings. That the committee of the whole receives the third quarter fire report. And that the following be recommended to council, that council accept the third quarter report as information. All in favor? Carry. Next one is the third quarter water report. Any questions on it? Seeing none, the motion is moved by Karen Jennings, second by Ian Straight, we have the whole received the third quarter water report. And that the following be recommended to council, that council accept the third quarter report as information. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. And the next one is the chief building official Jim Hunter, third quarter building report. Any questions on that? I guess I was going to make just a comment, having read it in detail. Um, this is maybe a, a commenter, but are probably more of a question. It, it seems that some of the, there was a little bit of a slowdown. In the third quarter this time, in, in part of this report compared to last year in the third quarter. And, and yet. And I guess I just kind of, if anybody has any idea about maybe why, because. It, like last year, we were in the thick of COVID. And maybe even a shutdown or lockdown. And whereas now, where the lockdown and things seemingly are still pretty positive. But does anybody have any comment about that? Or maybe Andrew, if I could, do you have any? Any feeling about that? Because, you know. Generally, it seems like it's a bit down. I, I think, I wonder if we have any reason why.
Um. Just, I guess generally speaking, when staff have discussed this at our monthly meeting. There is some level of unpredictability to. To the number of permits and. The number of housing starts and sometimes like anything, it can be preloaded more to the start of the year to the end of the year. Um, I know the year started off very strong, so. I would say because it's still going well. It's not going to, you know, exponentially increase over the prior year, but. I guess really we just, we do those reports to just see where we stand and.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. And I, I kind of thought that possibly it has to do with the fact that it's. People are having to wait for supplies, wait for materials, so. You know, if they're still on, on hold, then they can't go ahead and build. Uh, which definitely is still a problem in, in Canada. Jeff, please?
Yeah, thanks for your, I was thinking the same thing. As I saw it, I was like, you know, obviously hoping or expecting a higher number, but you know, like. When, when you look at that, uh, July, August, September, and July was in that sort of, that was. When there was just the talk of things starting to come down in price and, and supply getting a little bit better. But I wonder if that was, uh, was one of those things where it was a, because like, I mean, our planning stats look like there's lots of. Action going on and trying to get things like the other parts of it done. But I wonder if it's just that, that slowdown in the, uh. In the industry with getting the, the, the stock and labor has been a huge issue, I know, in that, in that industry too as well, where. Uh, there might have been a lot going to start, like Andrew had said, but. Uh, it's hard for industries or companies to get going even more. When they're already pretty well tapped out and they can't hire anybody else. So I think anybody in that industry is right now is, is, is clamoring for, for people. So I, I. I agree and I, and I think that's going to be a, a short blip and, and, and we're going to see a turnaround pretty quick, so.
Yeah, I like that positive part. Okay, thanks everybody for that. I do have a motion. It was moved by Ian Straight, second by Claus Vandermeer, that the committee receive. The following report, that's the third quarter building report and that the following be recommended to council, that council accept third quarter report as information. All in favor? It's carried, thank you. And the final report is, um. I guess. Carl is not with us, right? Okay, so do we have any questions for this report? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by Claus Vandermeer, second by Jeff Carroll. That the committee of the whole receive the following report, the third quarter planning report and that the following be recommended to council, that council accept. Third quarter report as information. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Um, yes, Claus?
Yeah, uh, thanks, Ru. I'd just like to compliment all the authors of all these reports. They're very well detailed. Excellent information, so I just want to pass on my compliments to all the people who brought these reports forward.
Yeah, thank you, Claus, for that. So Christie, I'm back to you again and. Before we adjourn the committee, the whole meeting, uh, do we have any questions from the public?
Just checking my sites here. Nope, we have no questions from the public.
Hey, thank you. Then I have a motion moved by Jeff Carroll, second by Claus Vander, sorry, second by Karen Jennings. That the committee. They put my phone. That the committee now, I do now adjourn at.
Seven oh six.
Seven oh six PM, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. We're going to go straight into our, back to our council meeting. And I have a motion. It was moved by Claus Vandermeer and second by Jeff Carroll. That the committee. Been at seven oh seven, is it? Seven oh seven?
Yep.
Seven oh seven PM, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And. Will also then also. Oops, sorry about that. Have to get my. Agenda here. And. So we're back to the committee. I'm sorry about that, everybody. I have a motion here. It was moved by Jeff Carroll and second by Clark, by Karen Jennings. That this council moves into closed session as per S two thirty-nine. That's two of the municipal act S zero two thousand and one in order to address one item. That's personal item, personal matters about an identifiable individual. Uh, including municipal or local board employees, more specifically, personal matters about an identifiable individual. Uh, and people to stay in camera will be. Uh, all the members of council and the deputy clerk administrator, uh, Andrew Hodge. And all in favor?